Okay, we're same format here with the school board candidates. Each of the candidates will be allowed a two-minute opening. Then we'll have the questionings round robin like we did with the commissioners. And then there'll be a two-minute closing. We're gonna go ahead and get started with Mr. Fuentes.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for taking time out of your day to come visit, listen to what all the candidates have to say. Excuse me, thank you for being responsible voters, responsible citizens, and being here. I'd like to congratulate all the city candidates that were here earlier. They're gonna be a tough act to follow because they spoke so well. But you can see that the genuineness of them caring about this community is there. And I think that you'll see that, you know, the candidates up here have the same desires to serve. So I'd like to first thank my family, my wife and my dad for being here. We have some illnesses in the family, so some people couldn't be here, but thank you for all the support and everything that you've always been there and supported me throughout this term, the first term that I had as a school board member. I think the record for myself would speak for itself. You can look at my attendance over the last four, four-and-a-half years. Anytime that I missed a meeting was because I was out of town. I consider this privilege of serving on the school board very important, and I don't take it lightly. And that's why I make it a point to go, whether it's something I'm in favor of or something that I, with my whole heart, disapprove of. I'm still there to be there, to represent, because that's what I was elected to do. I'm very thankful for the time that I've had there. It's opened my eyes to the importance of education at a much higher level, not just in the execution of educating our children, but being fiscally responsible with taxpayer money, infrastructure, security, and all of those things that I'm sure we'll get to tonight. So thank you for being here, and thank you again.
Ms. Oliveta?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Anadale Oliveira, and I'm running for school board because I feel that I have the expertise, the background knowledge, to make decisions that will impact and benefit our students at WISD. I have a master's, a bachelor's degree in education, kinder through twelve. I have a master's and a doctorate's degree in educational leadership. I feel that, based on my experience as a teacher assistant, as a teacher, as an assistant principal, a principal, an assistant superintendent, that I will use the knowledge that I've attained during those thirty-two years and, once again, make decisions that will help our students. I know about every aspect of the education system. I know about accountability. I know what it takes to educate our students. I know about index one, where you look at all the students, index two, where you compare students, index three, where you look at the gaps between the different sub-populations, where you also look at the post-secondary readiness. It's very important that we educate our kids to be college and career-ready. I also know about the difference of populations, your special ed students, your bilingual students, your KATE students. You know, it's very important that as a board member that you have this knowledge because you are brought programs to vote on. There's budgets that you have to look at. So it's very important. So I want to thank everyone for being here tonight, and I also want to ask the public to go out and vote for me because I feel that, based on my experience in the school setting, and based on my educational background, that I will do the job that I need to do to make good decisions for not only our students, but also the staff that resides and that are employed at Westlaco ISD. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, and thank you for making time to come out here today. My name is Oscar Caballero. I am currently on the Westlaco ISD School Board and seeking reelection. I was born and raised here in the city of Westlaco and was a product of WISD. I am married to Alma Campos, and we have four children. My oldest daughter Cecily Anne, she currently attends UTPA in Edinburgh. My son Gabriel, he currently attends TSTC College in Waco, Texas. I have two young ladies, one in middle school, Sidney Caballero, and I also have another daughter, Priscilla Caballero, who's at Margot Elementary. I have worked for Dean Foods, which is Higia, as a territory manager for logistics and sales department for the last twenty years. The reason I am running for reelection is because some of the other board members, our superintendent, myself, share some of the same visions for WISD. I have served as a volunteer in several roles on behalf of my community. My community involvement serves as a knowledge and experience that will help me to provide leadership to continue to build a vision we all can share in. Some of my community involvement for seventeen years, serving on different boards, are with Westlaco Boys and Girls Club of Westlaco. I'm on Parks and Recreation with the city of Westlaco. Westlaco Baseball, Softball Pony League. VOGA, raising money for Make-A-Wish Foundation. St. Joan of Arc Parish, CCD teacher with confirmation kids. I also am a member of the Knights of Columbus, and many more boards that I have been part of, including, of course, Westlaco ISD School Board trustee for three years. Many of these boards have something in common, and that's kids. I promise, I don't have a personal interest, and I have the best interest in our kids' education to prepare them for college. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. It's a hard act to follow with the city commissioners, having all their people here, but I'm Isidoro Nieto. I've been a lifelong resident of Westlaco. I've been in the education system for thirty-six years as a college tutor, as a bus driver, as a teacher-coach, as an assistant principal, and the last fourteen, fifteen years as principal. I've been fortunate to work with so many students that I wanted to have an impact on students. So when I was teaching and coaching, I only impacted a few, which were the athletes, all right? So when I became assistant principal, I impacted more students. So when I became principal at Mary Hook Middle School, you impact eight hundred students plus the teachers plus the parents. So when I went to Westlaco High School, I impacted twenty-five-hundred students every year for eight years. So, you know, it's a difficult task, but to be part of the board is to find ways to provide the best quality education for your kids, for my nephews and nieces that are attending the elementaries and the middle schools and the high schools right now. So, thank you for being here. I appreciate your support. And I cannot promise that I will do everything correct, because one time I promised my wife something, and I didn't follow through, and so I said, "I will never promise again." By the way, I didn't mention my wife, I'm married to Melissa Valdez Nieto. She is at a board meeting in Harlingen. She's the current HR director over there. I have three wonderful sons. They went through the Westlaco Independent School District, through elementary, middle school, and high school. They're all highly successful. And I have a bunch of nephews and nieces that also went through this school district, and I'm here to make sure that we continue to provide a quality education for your kids and my nephews and nieces that will continue in the Westlaco Independent School District. Thank you.
Mr. Fuentes, we're gonna start with you. What do you see as the primary work for the school board in the next year?
There's many issues, but some of the highlighted issues would probably be facilities. With a continuing, growing population, we have lost some students to the IDEA Academy, but that doesn't change that there's a need. And not only that, we need facilities that can handle new technology. We need to retrofit some of our older campuses to make sure that the technology that we're using, implementing in the classroom, is available to all students, not just to the ones that have new schools. Security and safety is an important issue. As we all know, gangs have always been a part of the community. Like it or not, they are there. We need to try to protect those kids. We've enclosed two of the campuses with fences. We'd like to continue that. We've allocated a million dollars in our budget for ongoing security and safety improvements. As far as education, we need to continue to encourage our kids to be ready for SAT and ACT, AP prep, and more rigorous classes to be ready for college. And we also need to continue to develop lifelong skills within the framework of the classroom.
Thank you.
The primary work that I see for the board is finance and curriculum, and I think they go hand in hand. My forte or my passion in a school district is curriculum and instruction. And I will work with my fellow board members to ensure that we have the finances to maintain the programs that we have, and also address the daily operation needs of our district, as well as provide monies for our staff members. I see curriculum as the main, main issue, as a primary work for our school board, because this past school year, Westlaco ISD fell to the bottom of the list when compared to other school districts. And in the past, it used to be at the top. My priority is to help our students, or help our school district get to the bottom of, I mean, to the top of that list, because in doing so, we won't lose our kids. We have lost, I did some research, we have lost about five hundred students this year to charters and public schools, and that's unacceptable.
Thank you.
Well, first and foremost, we need to set yearly goals for the district, working along with the superintendent and the fellow board members. Working on the budget, making sure that we have the money set aside for facilities, investing more into the safety and security, fencing some properties for our schools, continuing to focus on the star testing, and continue to offer a well-rounded education. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess going last, sometimes they answer their question before I can answer any, but good job by Mr. Fuentes and Ms. Oliveira, and Dr. Oliveira and Oscar. Of course, facilities is very important. We have to have a five-year plan, meet with the superintendent, and see what we need in five years. You know, you have to have a plan, whether you need another high school, do you need another middle school? If you have to focus on curriculum, you know, there's so many phases, but one area that we need to focus on too is the medical school and SpaceX. Medical school's coming into play. We want our students, our students that want to go into the medical field, be part of that medical profession and be part of SpaceX. Find out what is it that SpaceX and medical, what they need. What is it that they need? And that way, we can provide our students those resources so they can be well-prepared for those two programs.
Thank you. Ms. Oliveta, this next question's for you. How is the school district poised to deal with the potential influx of immigrants enrolling in schools in Westlaco?
Well, I looked into this issue, so the first thing that I did is I called the school district to find out what plan was in place, and they told me that there was no plan in place. So based on my education, I know that federal law requires that all Texas students, all school-aged children, be allowed to go into the different districts. And this law is based on a Supreme Court ruling of nineteen eighty-two, Plyer versus Doe. And basically, what this case stated was that immigrant students have the same rights as US-born students. So immigrant students cannot be discriminated based on their nationality, based on their language, and also on their immigrant status. So to answer the question, what I would do is I would arrange a workshop with my fellow board members, and we would discuss a plan to address this issue, and of course, always keeping in mind that we have to follow federal mandates and state mandates. Thank you.
Thank you.
The, there is a homeless law that is in effect, what Ms. Oliveira was talking about, and Westlaco ISD has to register these kids without question. We have enough classrooms to accommodate these immigrants. We might have to hire extra bilingual teachers, and we would have to place them in ESL classes for them to catch up, you know, with the rest of the kids, but we can accept them.
Thank you.
I guess being at the high school for the last couple of years, there hasn't been a high influx of immigrants here in Westlaco. Now, I know that in Bronzeville and in Hidalgo, there is a lot of immigrants, but in Westlaco, we have our ESL program in place. We have a bilingual program in place at the elementary. And at the high school, we have those immigrants that are coming into the United States. We group them together for the ESL class, so they can learn English, and then they can adapt to the other courses that they take at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you.
In discussing this with our superintendent, there were a few things that came up. One, these children or these immigrants would be classified as homeless, so they would have a different criteria of meeting, a different criteria to meet as far as being accepted into our schools, which Dr. Oliveira is correct, they would all be accepted. The great part about what we have is we have the capacity right now to be able to handle a few hundred students like this. If we reached into the thousands, we wouldn't be able to handle that kind of capacity. But as of right now, our intake center is well-prepared. They know what to do as far as intaking these kids. And as far as our teaching, at the elementary level, most of our teachers are bilingually certified, so that they can approach these English-language learners and acclimate them into the regular school population. But as far as the higher level, the middle school and the high school programs, that would be a lot more challenging. But we do have the infrastructure in place to handle a few hundred of these students.
Thank you. Mr. Caballero, this is for you. How can the district help improve the dropout rate?
The district can help improve the dropout rate by having extra parental involvement, the social workers that the district hires. They go out to the neighborhoods and look for these kids who are at home, and they're not attending the schools. Also, offering them opportunities to come back through the flex schedules, the optional schedules at South Palm Gardens, where they can come and, you know, for half a day and earn credit, earn their degree, I mean, their diploma. And by that, we can improve the dropout rate.
Thank you.
Dropout rate. Right now, the parental involvement program and the council department do an excellent job of recovering, like Mr. Caballero said, the high school students. But we have to be proactive. Data has shown that elementary students, especially in second, third grade, they're below reading level, they have high absenteeism, that don't do well or stay behind. If we can target those students early, when they're in elementary, when they get to high school, those are the potential dropouts. When we wait till they get to high school, that is difficult, because by that time, nobody has worked with them, or they have tried to work with them, but a lot of times, they need that extra assistance. So if we can be proactive and help them when they're young, and guide them in the right direction, then we won't have a problem with the dropout rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fuentes?
Currently, right now, each of the campuses has their own incentive plan for reaching out to these children. They have perfect attendance awards, where they give out iPads or different things, Google Chrome, things like that. But they also are eligible at the end of the year to receive bigger and better prizes. So those are always neat for the elementary kids. Where we have a problem, you know, we all have been to elementary awards assemblies, and the parking lot is crowded. You get to high school, and it's a lot different. Somewhere in between, between the middle school and high school, there's a disconnect for parents, whether it's their inability to connect with the kids as they get into a higher-level education. You know, even I sometimes struggle to go back to third grade and go, "I don't remember that problem. I'm not sure. Let me look at the book." So I can only imagine the challenges and frustrations that parents might have. So as the other candidate said, a better outreach with our social workers and our parental involvement.
Thank you. Dr. Oliveira?
Okay, I feel that there are several ways that we can reach our students. One of them is just basically have a survey for our kids and find out what is it that you don't like about school, and address those needs, all right? Secondly, we need to make school more engaging through real-world experiences. In other words, provide our students with experiences that they're going to experience out in the real world. And also, I think it's very important that we make learning fun for students. As a former principal, I always made learning fun for kids, and you know what? The kids were always at school. It increased the attendance. We never had any problems with it because school was fun. The kids thought that they were just coming to school, and in reality, to have fun, but in reality, they were learning. So we need to do some of the things that we do at elementary. We need to move them on to middle school and to high school. I also think that improve the communication between the parents and the students. Thank you.
Ms. Nieto, this question is for you. As a school board member, what do you believe our schools need to do to prepare for the coming of the new medical school and SpaceX to the Valley?
Good question. I guess, you know, what we need to do is meet with the personnel from SpaceX and the medical field area, and let, and us, we need to meet with them to find out what is it that our students need to either work in the technical skills that they're gonna need, they're gonna need people to work in technical skills in the office area and so forth, but also, we need to prepare our students. So we need to meet with them to find out what kind of classes do our students need to take in order to be prepared for the medical area? And then, of course, in SpaceX, also the sciences, the biology, the chemistries, what are the courses do our students need to take in order to be well-prepared for those two programs?
Thank you. Mr. Fuentes?
In addition to the medical school and to SpaceX, very recently, I found out that there's also going to be a petroleum industry boom here in the Valley. Right along the border, they found something that's bigger than the Eagle Shale area. So we're about to get an influx of more needs for skilled trade workers. We're gonna have, you know, obviously, our KATE program already does a great job with welding program, construction, and other trade skills that will be necessary, not just in that industry itself, but also for SpaceX and the medical school. As far as SpaceX is concerned, Elon Musk, the person in charge of SpaceX, has indicated that what he's looking for are people with those skills, but also somebody that has tremendous work ethic. So what we need to do is continue to push our kids to want to be the best. Very recently, College First had a program here at the middle school that they sponsored, and what they did was they invited petroleum engineers to educate the kids about the opportunities that would be coming up. So in addition to developing the work skills, also encouraging them to see what their opportunities would be like in the future.
Thank you. Doctor?
I believe that our school district has to provide a rigorous curriculum, especially in the area of math and science, of course focusing on medicine and also engineering. I feel that by providing this curriculum, it will allow our students to compete with other students that want to gain acceptance into the medical school and also find jobs in SpaceX. We must also work, I feel collaboratively, with our surrounding universities and also colleges to increase the number of students that are taking, that are enrolled in the associate's program, where they earn a degree in the area of medicine, in the area of engineering. And I feel that by doing this, once again, we will help our students gain better opportunities to be accepted into the medical school and also gain employment at SpaceX. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess everything that I had on here, you already said it, but anyways, I believe we need to offer more rigorous classes in biology and chemistry. Work closely with them to find out what other classes we can offer our students to get an edge on getting accepted at the medical school or the jobs that are gonna be created at SpaceX. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Fuentes, we're back to you. In what ways can the school board and city commission work together to benefit the community?
As we saw earlier, there seems to be some sort of a disconnect between the school and the city. You can see that not just, you know, between us as entities, but even within the city chambers themselves, there seems to be some lack of direction. And what I would like to see is for our city and for our schools to find ways to jointly have programs for our kids, whether it be summer school or some sort of a summer program. As we all know, kids that stay busy tend not to get in trouble. So what I would like for us to do is, we don't have any programs right now where the city and the school collaborate. All we have is school programs. So I would like for us to be able to utilize parks and things like that, more joint facilities. I would like for our community to also be involved in the after-school programs, because a kid that's involved in an after-school program, that's engaged in a civic, community-responsible project, will have more ownership of the city and be more likely to contribute to that city in some way, fashion, or form.
Thank you. Dr. Oliveira?
I believe that the school board and the city commission can work together by developing or creating some type of committee that addresses different issues that our youth faces. We are one community. We are one community, and I believe that this community will serve, will have to meet many, many, many times to look at the different issues. I believe that in working together, we can come up with tutoring programs, that we can have sessions to where our students learn about, you know, learn how to make a resume, learn how to fill out an application. I feel that even simple things like proper behavior at a function, things like that. So I feel that by working together, you know, the purpose of our, like I said, it's one community. Our purpose is to educate our kids to be college and career-ready in order for them to be productive citizens within our communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe the school board and the city can work together by having more joint facilities, like the Boys and Girls Club located in different parts of the city. Maybe the city can help invest in the playground equipment at elementary schools, so kids can play in the evenings. Maybe have like the Chamber of Commerce work hand-in-hand with the Westlaco Independent School District to advertise the great things that are happening in our district.
Thank you.
I believe that collaboration is very important between the city and the school board, as Mr. Fuentes mentioned. It's apparent that it's not. But if we can work with businesses, we can work with Nap Hospital, Nap Hospital was mentioned, you know, we can work with them with internships and mentoring for students, especially internships in the summer. You know, students that want to join BNAN or be in a business area. If we can have those businesses work with us and place those students there, they'll have hands-on experiences, and that way, they can decide, is that an area they want to continue after they leave high school? I think that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Oliveira, this question is for you. Are you in favor of term limits for the school board? And if yes, how many terms should a member be allowed to serve?
I'm not in favor of term limits for school board members. I believe that as a school board member, I'm going to serve as the face and the voice of our community. I feel that if a board member is contributing in a positive way to the school district, I feel that that should, that that board member should stay on as long as the community wants them. It's very simple. The voters themselves decide on the term limits. If they don't feel that a school board member is doing a good job, well, then they won't reelect him or her. So I'm not in favor of imposing term limits for our school board members. Thank you.
Thank you.
I really don't think we should have term limits. But if I had to vote, I would say three terms. That would give us twelve years. I think that would be sufficient enough time to serve on the board. I would say the first term is always to learn, you know, the roles of the board member's role. And the second term would be to be effective. And then the third would probably be to help train the new board members. And that's why I say, you know, if I had to, I would say three terms. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree with both of them. You know, yes, no, there shouldn't be a term limit, but I believe with what Oscar said, that three terms, which is twelve years, it's a phase, the learning phase. You become a productive board member, and then you're, hopefully, you're a very productive board member, that you can teach a new ones to come in. But it's always good to have new personnel run for the board. You know, a lot of people You know, a lot of people don't take that time, and I, I hope that other people will take the time to run for the board. Thank you.
And Mr. Fuentes?
The simple answer for me is no. I'm not in favor of term limits. As Dr. Oliva said, if the, if the public wants you there, they'll continue to have you there. But I think that there, maybe as a compromise, would be consecutive term limits, maybe two or three, and then take a break and come back on if that's, if that's your, your preference. But I don't believe that somebody that's willing to serve their community should be impeded in doing so.
Thank you. Mr. Caballero, Caballero, this question is for you. Retaining good teachers is a challenge. As a school board member, what can be done to make certain good teachers don't leave our district?
Well, I think right now what we have in place is, is a, a good program for all the teachers, you know, but depend, you know, retaining good dependable teachers is very important to us, especially the kids. They're the ones who bond with the kids. So, Westlaco ISD has one of the highest paid wages in the valley and in the state, while providing them with a Cadillac insurance plan, offering free health to the employee, free dental, free life insurance, free flu vaccinations, and also trying to provide them a harassment-free environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Of course, you know, maintaining salaries across the board, teachers, spare professionals, maintenance, you know, and so forth, you need to maintain that high competitive salary so they can, so we can maintain them, not only the teachers, but teachers, if we can provide, a lot of the teachers do UIL coaching, and if we provide better stipends for that, for that area, if we provide a better stipend for master's degree, those teachers will stay in the district, because a lot of time, your excellent teachers are the ones that have the desire to get their master's degree. And so, if we can keep those teachers by providing those incentives, then everybody prospers, the students, and of course, the parents too, because now the students are gonna receive a quality education. And we haven't had, the turnover in Westlaco has been very minimal. It's been like 3% or 4% district-wide. We don't lose a lot of teachers. Actually, every year, that more people apply in Westlaco, but they cannot get in because we don't have people leaving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Both great answers, and I think that what we offer as far as the district, as far as our competitive pay, you know, we've given pay raises every single year, that's how our budget starts. It, it always starts with payroll. As Oscar mentioned, all the benefit package is very rich, and none of it comes out of the pockets of our employees. So, there is a real economic benefit to working for us in addition to the pay. We also recognize our, our Teachers of the Year through the billboards, through recognition, throughout. We have a, a nice meal for them and recognize them at a district luncheon, and we also recognize all of our best educators at each of the campuses every month on the marquee. So, that's one way we would like to do it. What I would like to see, though, is I would like to see some sort of a, a more comprehensive mentor program where we can get our best teachers to train our newer teachers and get them more involved in teaching them best practices.
Thank you.
As a former principal, some of the ways that I would retain teachers would be, first of all, to provide them with, with the time that they needed to plan. So, I would call this cultivated collaboration for our teachers where they would plan their lesson plans, also recognize our teachers for their hard work. I would also provide leadership opportunities for them where they could present some of the best, the best practices that they use in their classrooms, and also provide them with the opportunities to go out and learn some of the best practices that are not, that are out there in the, in the state, not only allow them to stay here within, within, within our region, within our, within our community, and also, I would allow them to take part in the decision-making process. That's, that's very important. And also, and, and by doing, by doing that, I would empower the teachers, because it's very important to allow your teachers to have a voice in what you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nieto, this is for you. How is or should the district combat the competition from charter schools in the area?
I believe using K West, you know, to, to promote our students. I know that currently, right now, we have K West as a program where students from the district are promoting Westlaco ISD. I know that I saw the current Brianna Savala, Ms. Westlaco, being promoted there and promoting our, our programs. I think if we can use our technology through K West and also promote the elementaries, because right now, we're losing those students to ID Academy at the elementary level, not yet at the high school level, but it's, it's coming later on as they continue to build more facilities at ID Academy. But if we can promote all the programs that we have, if we can provide a brochure, a magazine to parents of all the programs that we have in WISD, all the good programs that we have, because we have a lot, and a lot of people don't realize how many positive programs we have, not only athletics, but economics and band and so forth. Thank you.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yeah, there's some perception that the ID Academy is a charter school where it's really just a public school that draws from the population that we serve. But with that being said, it's a very real threat to us. As Dr. Oliva mentioned earlier, we've, over the last two years, have been in a rut where we've lost children on an, on an annual basis for the last two years. So, I agree with Doc, with Mr. Nieto in that we need to promote our programs. There are certain things that a charter school right now in, in this area cannot provide, and those are the children enrichment programs, the ancillary programs that we can provide, which would be UIL activities, band, athletics, host of other options that charter schools are not, do not have the infrastructure for. So, if we continue to promote those things, whether it's through the district billboard, through K West, through programs, through the multimedia, Facebook and commercials, the monitor ads, things like that, I can, think we need to continue to highlight our successes for our students.
Thank you.
I feel that we need to provide a top-notch curriculum. I know that as the parents within our community, all they want is a quality education for their children, and obviously, that's not taking place right now at Westlaco ISD, all right? Because we've lost 500 students, and you, this is unacceptable. You know, for the community out there, the schools receive monies based on enrollment, and this is not taking place right now. So, I know that several principals have approached me and told me that they are not getting some of the guidance that they need in the area of curriculum instruction. I did some research, and I found out that our top curriculum people, our secondary and elementary directors, were doing other duties, and therefore, you know, we, they were lacking in the area of curriculum. So, I feel if we address the issue of curriculum and instruction, our parents won't want to go to charter schools. They'll stay here at Westlaco ISD.
Thank you.
I believe we can come back charter schools by providing more variety of classes, rigorous, through our early college, high school, continue to offer the UIL competitions, continue offering kids to join the different clubs, like athletics, the band, and continue the advertisement on, on TV and billboards. I think by promoting all of these athletics and band, you know, and the billboards and the advertisement on TV, I think we get their names out there.
Thank you. Mr. Fuentes? Businesses and residents are facing higher property tax with increase from South Texas College, or proposed hospital district, county drainage bonds, and the possibility of new county courthouse. What is your responsibility to taxpayers to maintain a quality education for students without further burdening taxpayers?
Well, it's our ultimate responsibility. As we mentioned earlier, the whole purpose of why we're here is to educate our children in the most effective and positive way, and we need to do it within the confines of whatever budget the state gives us. Now, that doesn't mean we have to accept it. So, we have to continue to encourage, foster relationships with our state representatives and senators, and continue to push them to emphasize how important our school budgets are. We need to continue to maximize the efficiencies of our staff wherever there is a project overlap that we can find better ways to do those things. I would like to see us get a, get a grant writer. We haven't had one for, for some time now, and I think that we're missing out on opportunities to raise some real funds that can assist in paying for some of our employees and some of our other programs.
Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna begin by saying that when Dr. Oliva was the superintendent, our, our taxes were one of the lowest, if not the lowest, in, in, in the region or in Region One or in this, in, in, in our area. So, I do not believe that we need to raise taxes in order to maintain a quality education for our students. As Mr. Fuentes was saying, there are many grants available. We just need to tap into those grants. So, I believe that it is the responsibility of our CEO to work with collaboratively with, with his, his or her cabinet and come up with ways, be creative, be innovative, as far as what, what is it that we need to do to provide our kids with a quality education? And I, I, I strongly believe that we can do this without burdening our taxpayers.
Thank you.
I say work closely with the superintendent. The monies, you know, are, make sure that the monies are spent appropriately while maintaining, you know, the lowest tax rate in the, in the, in the valley, and we haven't increased any taxes in the last couple of years, and we've been able to provide a quality education. Also, you know, we, we, we need to continue to work in, at decreasing the dropout rates because this, this increases our ADA, and that's how we get monies from the, from the state. And like David said, you know, working with our state representative, and very importantly, you know, working, you know, with a grant writer to get these grants, you know, to get, get us the funding for our schools.
Thank you.
I think they touch base on the most important things, which is the grants, very important. There's a lot of grants out there for not only technology, but for educational purposes, and of course, working with our ADA. A lot of times, people don't understand our average daily attendance. The more attendance, the better the attendance on a six-week basis. At the end of the year, if the district is over 95%, you receive additional monies from the state. That's monies that you didn't have available at the beginning of the year. So, we can educate the parents. We've educated the teachers. We've educated school personnel. They understand that. But the parents need to understand that if the student is there at least till 10 o'clock, they count as ADA. That's why a lot of times we tell parents, make your appointments in the afternoon when the students are gonna be out. Try to have them at school because that is additional money that the school receives from average daily attendance. Thank you.
Thank you. Doctor Oliva, this question is for you. What do you think the valley will look like in 10 years, and what do you see as our students' role in helping to shape the future?
Well, I definitely see the valley growing in 10 years. It's grown within the past, previous 10 years. So, I feel, and I also see that the jobs that our students are going to be performing, they, they, they're not created yet. They're not created yet, and the reason I say this is because technology has, is constantly, constantly changing. And I see the valley, I see the classrooms, I see schools very different from the classrooms that we, that we have today. I don't think there's going, the kids are not gonna be using books anymore, they're going to be using electronic books. The signs are all here right now, when, you know, when, when you're, when the kids do work, they turn it into Edmodo, they, they use Skype to, to have lessons, they use iPads, they have all these abs. You know, I know that my grandson probably is very world-versed in, in technology, so I see, I see the, the valley changing in the future, and I see that some of the jobs that our kids are going to be performing, they haven't been created yet. So, I definitely see a change.
Thank you.
I, I totally agree with Dr. Oliva, you know, and as far as the jobs that are, you know, we're gonna have in 10 years are, are not here yet, you know, so, you know, the, the valley is growing, and it's gonna continue to grow, and we have to grow as far as the district. In 10 years, I believe we have a couple more schools built, and we will have to accommodate the technology, you know, with our facilities that we are going to provide for our kids. We need, we need to provide a well-rounded education along with job skills for these kids so they can be ready for the jobs that don't, do not exist in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the valley is becoming a huge metropolitan area, and with SpaceX coming up and the medical facilities coming up too, it's important that we work with them and find out what is it that our students need to be well-prepared to work in the, in those fields. And I know with technology, you know, students, it's not like in the old days where you work handouts and work. Now, you ask a student to work something out, they can use technology, they, they Google it. You know, that's very important in students Googling it. They Google whatever it is, whether it's a math problem, a chemistry problem, a research paper, they automatically can do that. But you ask them to do it on paper, a lot of them can't. And, and you, we have to utilize those things that the students can use, and they can become better. Thank you.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yeah, there's only, there's a finite number of answers when we're talking about education. I mean, we're all gonna be talking about the same things as far as learning and, and trade skills and job skills and things like that, so rather than talk about that again, I think that the classroom itself is going to be changing from the standpoint that it'll be, you know, right now, we have small learning communities which focuses a student in one area of industry, whether it's the medical field, the, the fine arts, business, those types of things, where I think that in 10 years, we'll have to take those small learning communities and make them much more applicable to the real world, which would be, they'd be more project-oriented. The collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce and local businesses would dictate what the, what this kids would be learning in the classroom, so very skill-specific related to the jobs that are available. And also, they would be problem-solving, more project, problem-solving oriented, so that, like, like the other candidates were saying, that when something comes up, they know what to look for, they know how to figure out these problems, so that when they get onto the real world, they have those skills.
Thank you. And now for our last question for the panel. Mr. Caballero. What is your job as a school board member, and what is expected of you by the community?
My job as a school board member is to oversee Westlaco ISD, set policy, and make high-level decisions, work with the superintendent, set yearly goals, make sure that the monies are spent appropriately. The community would expect a board member to be responsive and receptive to parents, students, and staff. They expect us to weigh all facts before making a decision with their, with their taxpayers' money.
Thank you.
Can you repeat the question?
What is your job as a school board member, and what is expected of you by the community?
Okay. As a school board member, of course, you have to be prepared to provide a quality education to all students, whether it's our GT students, whether it's our special ed students, and of course, your, your bilingual students, your recent immigrants, but also to provide to all the other programs, your co-curricular activities, your extracurricular activities. You have to provide good resources so they can be successful. And if you have seen in the last few years, when we went to high school redesign, which was the smaller communities that Mr. Fuentes mentioned, the high school redesign helped every program. If you look back at the last five years and see how successful both high schools had been, the middle schools, in fact, in 2009, both high schools were recognized by US News and World Report as a silver medalist because of four years of excellent scores over the period of time. So, you know, it's important that we continue to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Fuentes?
We're, we're, we're labeled as school board trustees, and the trustee portion being that we're entrusted with children, we're entrusted with teaching those children and getting them ready for whatever life has to... ready for whatever life has to offer for them after high school, whether it is job skills and the workforce, entry into the workforce, or whether it's getting them ready for college. We're also responsible, and we're entrusted with the city coffers as far as the school district is concerned. We are the highest dollar amount budget in the entire city of Weslaco. We're the highest, we're the largest employer, we have the biggest budgets. We have over $140 million of budget that we have to deal with just on a local level. That doesn't include all the federal programs. So as a board member, you're entrusted with those finances and making sure that we maximize wherever we can, whether it's in purchasing, whether it's in joint facilities, whatever it takes to get our children educated at the right dollar amount, and trying to keep our taxes low.
Thank you. Dr. Oliveta?
I see the, my job as a school board member is to govern and to oversee the management of the school district. A board member's primary responsibility is to ensure that the district is following mandates, that's following state accountabilities, that they are making decisions regarding the budgets, that will serve the best interest of our students. I know that part of our job responsibilities are outlined in our Texas Education Code, Chapter 11, Subchapter D. This is where it tells us exactly what we are supposed to do as board members. So I feel that's part of my job is to work with my fellow board members and, you know, familiarize ourselves with our job responsibilities, so that way, we can know, you know, what our boundaries are. And also, as far as what the community expects from me, I feel that it's to advocate and to serve as a voice.
Okay, that concludes the question and answer period. Now, I'd like to allow each of the candidates two minutes for closing statements, and we'll start with Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you again for coming out and staying for this extended period of time. I know it was a little more entertaining earlier, but thank you for staying and listening to what we have to say about the school. I mean, all of us have been involved in the school district in some way. I think all of us are a product of this school district, and it's really important and personal to us. I did not touch on my experience earlier in that I am a former teacher. I used to teach business education. I taught concurrent accounting to our high school students at Weslaco High School. I was also a coach for five and a half years, and I served as business manager at Progreso ISD for one year prior to moving on to another job. I'm a CPA by trade, and I've been a CPA since, I think, 1997 or something like that. And business is my background, and that's what I practice today. I manage and oversee five different companies, financially and operationally, and I believe that all of those experiences combined give me a very unique perspective into what our kids need, and how I can help our superintendent and our finance committee make sure that our budget is adequate and responsible. I had the privilege of going to Nashville about a month ago to see what for next-generation learning is doing over there, which is really just to take off of what we're doing here, small learning communities and more business collaboration. Students in their classrooms were creating projects that were going to be marketed nationally for a local company. I mean, what a tremendous opportunity. And with the boom that we're expecting here with SpaceX and the petroleum and everything else at medical school that's coming, those kinds of opportunities are there. We have to be creative in the way that we find them. President Obama visited that school back in January, and more recently, he recognized Dr. King from PSJA for the things that they're doing. And the truth is, what they're doing at those two schools are no different than what we're doing here. We just have to take it to the next level. And I think working with the superintendent in a positive, constructive way is the right way to get us there.
Thank you very much. Dr. Oliveta?
Well, in closing, I would like to thank everyone for being here tonight, and I'm asking the viewing community to vote for me on November the 4th. I truly believe that based on my 30 years of experience working in a school, in the school system, and based on my educational background, having a bachelor's, having a master's, having a doctorate's degree, I feel that when you compare me to my opponent, that I am the most qualified candidate. Also, I have worked at all grade levels, from kinder through 12th grade. I've helped in the different departments. I am familiar with the ins and outs of operating a school system, and I have a track record at WISD of success. Every classroom, every organization, every school, that I have been the instructional leader, you know, I always bring success, or I always bring recognitions to those organizations, to those schools. The schools, like I said, that when I worked, I served as the instructional leader, always received the highest distinctions, whether it be recognized or exemplary. I know the, as far as rules and regulations, I know the law, I know about budgets, I know about GT students, I know about bilingual students, I know about the different accountability systems. So I know what it takes to run an exemplary school, and I feel that based on my expertise, I will be able to make decisions where we keep all of our students here at Weslaco ISD, where they won't want to go anywhere else. So I'm asking you once again for your support, and I thank all the voters in advance. God bless you all.
Thank you.
Well, again, I want to thank you guys for making time to come out here and hear us out. In closing, you know, the last three years that I've been on the board, you know, I've made some decisions, you know, for some changes that I feel are for the best interest for Weslaco ISD. You know, having said that, I think we're going in the right direction, you know, with the 21st century, you know, promoting the technology. These are the things that the kids need, you know, for our future. You know, we keep talking to our superintendent that we cannot just focus on the STAR exam, because we need our kids to have a well-rounded education. And that is something that we're pushing for, not just the STAR test, you know. You know, that's just a measure of part of the education, but we need to educate them well-rounded with so many things, and continue to work with the technology for the kids. And I would like to ask for your support for the upcoming elections. For October the 20th, we start with the early voting, and I would like to thank you again. God bless you.
Thank you.
And again, a special thank you for you all for being here tonight. I know that it's a difficult time, but with all the experience that I have in the educational business, I believe that I have the credentials, and I have people-person skills that I work well with people. And we need to work well with the superintendent alongside the other board members, so that way we can continue to have Weslaco be the top district in the valley. So with that said, if we work together as a team, then success will be evident. It'll be there. So thank you very much for being here today, and I hope I have your support, early voting, and of course, November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates. Appreciate it very much.